Give them one more minute and we'll get started. All right, look like we have everyone back with us. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to another meeting of the Inglewood City Council. Date is March the first, twenty twenty-one, and the time is now seven thirty-one P. M. Like the call, the meeting to order. Before we actually get started with the meeting, I would like to, before we do the pledge of allegiance, to acknowledge that we will have prayer by Pastor Catrice McKenzie Smith of the historic Smith Chapel Hemi Church. I believe she is on the line if we can unmute her, Troy, and take her video off. And basically, what I want to do today is because we have, there's a lot of things going on in the world. I know that you were praying before the pledge of allegiance, but we had a loss in the community of one of our, one of my colleagues, Henry Crump, Jr. He served for thirty-one years as the former chief deputy chief for the city of Inglewood. And he served on city council in two thousand nine to two thousand twelve as a representative for District Six. So as we stand before the pledge of allegiance, we'll have a moment of silence. And then the next voice you will hear is Pastor Kirk McKenzie. All rise, please. A moment of silence. Our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Pastor. Prayer, please.
Let us pray. God of many names, we come calling on your powerful name tonight. God of love, God of life, God of peace, God of community, and God of justice. Now, we ask that you would bless the leaders who've been elected to serve this city. God equip them with guidance, knowledge, wisdom, creativity, and vis- vision, Lord, to serve. God, we ask that you would bless the people who are gathered for this meeting today. And, Lord, that you would remind each person that we all have a part to do as we've all been called to serve. God, we ask that you would bless and cover the city of Inglewood. Restore it, renew it, God, and transform it for your glory. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you so very much, Pastor. Roll call, please.
Mayor Wimberly.
Here, reporting from City Hall, Inglewood, Michigan.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Here, in Inglewood, in my home.
Councilwoman Wiley.
Yes, I'm participating remotely from my home in Inglewood, Michigan, County of Wayne.
Okay, Councilman Williams.
Participating at my home here in the city of Inglewood, County of Wayne.
Councilwoman Washington.
Here in the city of Inglewood, in my home in Wayne County, Michigan.
Councilman Chisholm.
Here, reporting from my home, Inglewood, Michigan, County of Wayne.
And Councilman Shaw.
Here in Inglewood, Michigan.
Mayor, we have six present tonight, and we do have a quorum.
All right, motion carries. Let's get off into it. Approval of the agenda.
With the additional items?
Yes.
With the two additional items? We'll add those as items B, so item C and D.
And support for discussion.
All right, let's be moving properly, support discussion.
At the last council meeting, I have voted on an item or items with contingency. So either I just wanted to know if to add them at this time, or just do it during my council application for a motion to reconsider.
Oh, I don't know. How would that work, City Clerk?
He can, once we get done with the new business, if he would like to reconsider there, he can. He could also do under his council comments, but it would be good to do it under new business, to reconsider it, or actually even under, when you state previous business, also, he can do it there as well.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
And Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays for the agenda approval.
All right, motion carries, moving through, no presentations, public hearing. It's an agenda.
Don't move.
Port.
Moving properly, supported, roll call, please.
Mayor Pro, I'm sorry, Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
And Councilmember Wiley. Yes, okay, thank you, Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, boards and commissions, going around. I know Reverend Williams just said one from the beginning.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend, like to recommend Mr. Walter Johnson for the Park and Recreation Board in my district.
Port.
Moving properly, supported, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Um, yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
And Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, motion carries. Are there any others? All right, I'm looking to reappoint Lorenzo A. Moner, Jr., to the Police and Fire Retirement Board. He's been serving. He expired on twelve nineteen, and he wants to continue to serve. I just spoke with him last week. If I can have a motion to support that.
So move.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
And Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I, I need to ask the clerk whether or not, on the zoning board of appeal, I thought we already, uh, uh, selected, put back on there, his term, Roosevelt Stubbs?
No, you have seven persons on there already. The only thing is, is we have been unsuccessful several times. We're getting in touch with Dorsey Williams. So, I mean, we can't get in touch with him, have not been able to get in touch with him. So I don't know if someone wants, I mean, and he hasn't resigned, so I don't know.
Madam Clerk? Yes. I, I spoke to Dorsey about a week or so ago, and I told him they were looking for him, and he should call. But apparently, he has some, I can reach out to him again, but he has some issue with health, his knee, and rehabilitation and stuff like that. But I can still reach out to him like tomorrow and see again, have him call you direct.
Yes, I mean, I've been calling the number that I have for him, so.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to, Roosevelt Stubbs supposed to have been on that committee.
Right, he's a District Four, he's appointee for District Four.
And he's expired.
Councilman Chisholm, would you like to reappoint him? Sound like he want to serve.
Yes, um, I'm, and, and forgive my mind for forgetting the conversation, but I thought we had kind of sort of discussed this the last time. I was, I was in favor of it, because I know we were talking about.
I thought we had passed it, too. That's what I was trying to figure out.
So I guess the question is, is that this board, it requires, um, it's for seven persons, and you have right now, if you don't include Roosevelt Stubbs, and you including Mr. Dorsey Williams, you have one, two, three, four, five, six, you have seven persons.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we extend the contract for Roosevelt Stubbs and on the zoning board of appeals.
There's support?
Support?
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
And Council, uh, Councilmember Wiley.
Yeah.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
You have six yays, Mr. Mayor, for Roosevelt Stubbs.
All right, motion carries for Roosevelt to continue to serve in District Four. All right, any others?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we got an email, and I don't know if you had an opportunity to review it yet, from Commissioner Faison for the planning commission?
Yes. Definitely want to reappoint Kimberly Faison to the planning commission. Thank you, Councilman Chisholm. It's been moved improperly, supported. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
And Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, that's good, moving right along. Any others?
Any others?
All right, hearing done, let's move right along. All right, Councilman Chisholm, previous business, what you have for us?
Yes, I would like to add a motion to reconsider items A, LD twenty-six, item B, LD twenty dash twenty-seven. Um, I'm sorry, items A, LD dash, LD twenty dash twenty-six, item B, LD twenty dash twenty-seven, item C, twenty dash twenty-eight, from the previous Inglewood City Council meeting. Um, and the reason being, I have voted yes with contingency upon repea- receiving proof of payment. Receipts came through, and they have a variances of dates on them. Some dates were after the meeting of the last council meeting, and therefore, I would just like to go ahead, change my vote to a no. I'm speaking solely for myself and no one else on this body. I believe at the last meeting, the vote was four yays and two nays.
Okay, so we can do that all in one? And your, 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 you said your contingency is that you didn't get all the information that you required?
No, I, I did receive it, but after, you know, further investigation and looking at it, I would like to go ahead to change my vote to a no. I have voted yes on all of them with contingency.
Okay, all right, the city clerk, can we put them all in the same?
Yes, I have them all in the same.
Okay, then.
And so, Mayor, that's, so that, for his motion to reconsider, somebody needs to, on the other side, needs to support that as well. I mean, he made the motion.
So he would need support from what?
He needs support from, someone from the other side. He's reconsidering his vote.
So he needs support for somebody that owes against him?
Yeah.
Okay, I support it.
All right.
Thank you.
Moving properly, supported, any discussion?
Uh, yes.
Go ahead.
Um, I was wondering if the rest of the council got the email I sent about chargebacks? I sent out an email about tax chargebacks, because I believe at the last meeting, you said that the person involved in this did not owe us, and that's not true. They still owe us, because they don't owe Wayne County. Wayne County does not eat cities debt. What they do is act as a collection person, but if they can't collect that money from the party, they charge that money back to the city. And we have gone through this before with those chargebacks, the famous three hundred and some odd thousand dollars that Ann Capella did when she was, uh, uh, running the city as a city manager. So if the per, if the bill has gone to Wayne County, it does not mean that they still don't owe the city. They still owe the city. What Wayne County is acting as, as a, a collection agency, and if they in turn cannot collect that money from the people, they charge it back to the city.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think you're definitely partially right.
She right.
As it relates to chargeback, so if, if the person is actually in a payment plan with the county, the county's already paid the city, and the person is actually not defaulted on their payment plan, they own, they owe the county, so they're still paying the county, and it's not charged back to the city. So just for point of clarification.
But it will be charged back to the city, because they're not going to eat that debt.
Yeah.
The county never eats city debts. I mean, what would be the purpose in that?
I totally agree, totally agree.
I need to.
Yeah, just know that this person is in the, is in a payment plan with the county, is no money's owed to the city, so the money is still being paid to the county. So if that person defaults, so the county, then it comes back to the city as it relates to a chargeback.
Okay, and do you have a timeframe in that? And do you still sell property to those people owing in that instance? Is there, is there like, huh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just say it's something that this body just needs to add to the process, and if that's the case, then that's what we need to do.
What, what, what is it we need to do?
Just add, if, if a person owes any taxes, period, to the state, to the county, to local municipality, that they can't buy any property from the city. Simple as that.
Um, is, is Attorney Jones on this call to, can he, can he reference anything there, or even the treasurer?
Let, let's see the one of them. Let's chime in, guys.
I mean, we're talking about policy here, correct?
No, we're talking about owing the.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Wiley, I stepped on you. You said it's not about policy?
Uh, you said if the body wants to, then they can make a policy. I never suggested we make a policy. I'm talking about facts, either you owe or you don't.
Oh, no, no, I think my, my question, my question was, uh, what we're specifically talking about at this point is the policy related to, to whom we can sell. Is, is that what we're specifically discussing, or are we still talking about whether amounts are owed to the county or to the city? I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
I believe the fact that, um, that you still owe the city, because it will eventually be charged back to you. Is that correct? That what you understand chargebacks to be?
You you technically owe the county, uh, because the county does pay us. But then, as you're saying, if the county cannot collect and everything, there is the settlement process back with the city. So it, it's, it's hard to say yes or no on that in a, uh, you know, in a clear-cut fashion. There's, there's different elements to it. So, yeah, for a period of time, yes, you owe the county, but then, uh, it does eventually get settled back with the city. But using the term, oh, uh, you can't make a payment to the city, so technically, you would owe the county.
Okay, just for a point of clarification, that makes absolutely no sense, because there's either one or the other, okay? And maybe we should get somebody from the county to come here and explain it to us. That's it.
That's not a problem, and I'll definitely set that up with the treasurer, Eric Chabri. After your email, I forwarded, forwarded it to him, and we had a really good conversation about that. So I'll definitely get him on the line. That's one of the things that we need to do anyway, because of the foreclosures that's coming up with the county, whether or not they're going to do foreclosures this year or not, so we're going to do a presentation here soon.
And one other thing, I didn't hear anyone answer that they got that email I sent out.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we, I got it, I got it.
Yeah, I received it. Okay, so, so, so at any rate.
My, my question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Now, this individual, you, you said is on a payment plan to the, to the county.
As though, yeah, as of these receipts, for sure, but I believe he paid on that to the county.
Okay, so if he's on.
I can't speak to that.
Right, right, uh, well, I mean, if it's, if it's in the, i- if it's in the documents, it, it speaks to it already, am I correct?
Correct.
So then, this individual does not owe the city if it's in a payment plans to the, to the county.
That's correct.
To, to my understanding. Now, if David can, I don't know if Attorney Jones can, can chime in with that. I, I think we probably would be speaking something about policy of if we're going to have anyone who owes anything, any kind of taxes, period. So can he, can David, can you speak to that?
Yeah, I can't speak to the policy, but I, I was going to speak up prior to the treasurer speaking. It, I don't think there's any, if taxes go unpaid at the city for a long enough period of time, they're transferred over to the county. And what I was going to add is that the treasurer is correct. Once they're transferred to the county, you cannot come to the city and pay them anymore. So while technically the money is for the city's benefit, it's owed to the county. Now, I think to remember Wiley's point, her concern is that should the person not honor that payment plan with the county, it eventually will get charged back to the city. So the policy question to be addressed is, should we change it right now? The charter speaks to money owed to the city. So the, the policy question should be, do we want to also include any and all money owed, I think as the mayor indicated, to the county, to the state, to the city? Um, but the fact that you cannot compare it to the city, um, it is owed to the county once it's transferred from the city to the county.
So as, as our charter speaks, it's owing the city as, as of right now.
Correct.
I need a, a, a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, when you bring a reconsideration back for a, a vote, it's got to be two of the people that, that, that voted that consideration, am I correct? Okay, because the simple fact is, Mrs. Wiley did not vote for that, okay, and I don't know how she can, I sleep on the second.
She can second the motion, she can second the motion. He brought it up, he was on the prevailing side. He just needs a second, period, no matter.
When you reconsider something, the opposite side can.
It's just a, he, he had to bring up the motion, the actual motion, somebody who was on the prevailing side, which he was. And it's just, the motion just to reconsider just needs a second. It doesn't have to be anybody from, it just needs a second. It doesn't have to be anybody from any specific side. Would you like for me to read it to you?
I can read.
No, no, Felicia, I, 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 I thought I heard you said that, um, it should come from the other side. So I think that's probably.
From the prevailing side.
I know, but when you were saying the other side, I, 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 I thought you was, to me, I thought you was talking about the unprevailing side. When you said the other side, okay, so.
No, it just, it just needs, it just needs to have a second.
Okay, so that's, that's the clarification that I needed, because.
Who brings it up don't have to be from the prevailing, but it just needs a second.
What I thought you said, what I thought you said was, it, it needs to be second from the other side. So I, I wasn't for sure myself what you meant by that, but now that you said that it's from the, it can be second by anyone.
It can, yeah, it just needs a second.
Okay.
Okay. So any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Williams.
No.
Councilmember Shaw.
No.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Mayor, you have four yays.
All right, so motion carries to not sell the property. All right, moving right along, let's go. Second reading?
A second reading and approval on an amendment to chapter ninety-one of the City of Inglewood Code of Ordinance Animals.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
What?
We're properly moved and supported, and this is the second reading, so are we opening it up for, what is this? We're opening it up for discussion with the council and the public, or what are we doing?
No, we've already had the public hearing at the last meeting, the first one, the public hearing, so this is just the second reading and the approval.
All right, good then, so we can do it all right now, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
All right, any questions in this body? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Wiley.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
We have six yays, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion carries, item two.
Item two is a second reading and approval on an amendment to chapter one thirty-six point three zero of the City of Inglewood Code of Ordinances Drug Paraphernalia.
Don't move.
Port.
Moving properly, supported, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
And Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, motion carries, enough into new business.
Item A, under new business, is consideration and approval of a special land use for a proposed drive-through and carryout restaurant to be located on the north side of the street at two eight seven two four Michigan Ave, just east of Spring Hill Street in the B-three General Business District. Terry Roden is the applicant.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Support.
Moving properly, supported, discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, moving right along, item B.
Item B is consideration and, and approval as the previous WCA assessing contract expired. Consider approval of WCA assessing contract with the effective dates of eleven one twenty twenty to ten thirty-one twenty twenty-three.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I moved and we tabled this item, we continue working until such time we have sent out for bids.
Tabled to a date specific, or, um?
Well, we would need to, you, you all are instructing staff to go out for an RFP, so we have to put together RFP and then go from there.
Can he add that to the motion, please?
Yes, sir, I did. You did.
I can't hear you, Councilmember Williams.
Okay, 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 let me see, let me give you a little bit more volume, okay?
Okay, yes.
All right, I'm making a motion that we table it, okay, until such time we go out for the bid.
Okay. Thank you.
Support? Is there support?
Support.
Moving properly, supported, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
No.
Councilmember Wiley.
No.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
And Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor, we have four yays and two nays.
All right, motion carries, so we will start putting that information together as it relates to an RFP for our city assessor. So the treasurer will be working with, um, working to get that together, and then presented back to this body. All right, moving right into public participation.
Mayor, we got item C.
Oh, forget, I'm sorry. I just looked down and saw item C, but.
Okay, um, to vote in accordance with the discussion, um, that was had in closed session, McGill.
Don't move.
Your support?
Support.
Roll call.
Councilmember Wiley. Councilmember Wiley?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
No.
And Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Mayor, we have four yays and two nays.
All right, motion carries, item D.
Item D is to vote in accordance with the discussion that was had in closed session, clerk.
Don't move.
Your support? Your support?
Support.
All right, it's been moved and properly supported, roll call please.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
And Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Mayor, we have six yays.
All right, motion carries. All right, we're good. Now, city clerk?
Yes.
All right, good, moving right into public participation. Brings us to, um, the time in our agenda for the public to address this body and any concerns you may have. We're asking that, um, you keep it to one minute, and of course, we're asking just right off that you keep all comments respectful to the body. Let's go ahead and get Charles Blackwell out the way, Steve. I'll give him, I mean, I'm sorry, uh, Councilman Chisholm, if you can give him instructions as well, please, I'm sorry.
Sure, uh, we are at public participation. For those who have joined us by video, please use the raise hand feature. For those who have dialed in by telephone, please use star nine to raise your hand and be recognized. When you are unmuted, please state your name. For the record, you have one minute to speak.
All right, Charles Blackwell, please.
Hi, this is, uh, Charles Blackwell. Uh, Mayor Wimbley, that was a very nice interview that you gave to the Detroit Free Press. Now, let me tell the public why you are afraid of a independent investigation for the Alex Legion case. You knew about the stealing going on by Alex Legion and you did nothing. Now, you are scared of the independent investigation because you know when Michigan State Police come and investigate City Hall, they're gonna find out about all the corruption and backdoor deals that you are doing. And that's what you're afraid of, is them finding more dirty dirt about you, and that's what you're afraid of. Also, Attorney David Jones is a hypocrite.
Mister, Council, Blackwell, your one minute is, uh-
I'm sorry, Felicia, let him continue.
Okay.
Yes, um, Mayor Wimbley owes delinquent taxes and won't nobody speak about that. That is very hypocritical for people to speak about other people's delinquent taxes, but they won't say anything about Mayor Wimbley. Thank you.
All right, next person, please, Mrs. Hankerson.
Counsel, Mayor?
Good evening.
And citizens of Inkster, um, I just had a question, um, regarding the, um, the, um, the, uh, the proposal that we, um, gave to the council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, and I just wanna know, is there any follow-up on that, uh, about an outside investigation regarding Alex Legion? Cause that's what we asked for, so I wanna know if there's any progress on that.
Does anyone from this body wanna speak to that? Cause it's up to this council, we did get your request. Anybody?
Uh, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I just wanna get something clear, because it keep coming up over and over again. I, I thought that we had turned this over to the chief of police. What is it that they're looking for? I mean, we, we, I was waiting on the chief response on this investigation, okay? I, I'm a strong believer that we should allow our, uh, police department to do their thorough investigation before we make other type of decisions, okay? So I, I've been waiting on him, okay, do you know, do you know what's the holdup or whatever it is on, on that situation or what?
The chief is on the line right now, chief, can you speak to that, please?
And, and I'm only speaking, um, on it because I've been asked about it, so I have to follow through, uh, from the, for the citizens of Inkster. And the people that are asking me about it, so what do you want me to do?
And we understand that, Mr. Chairman.
Hello?
Okay, go ahead, Chief Riley, speak to that, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Look, look, th- there's a criminal investigation going on, uh, with that particular case. And, uh, it is ongoing and, and, uh, and that's where it is. I mean, there's a criminal investigation going on, uh, as far as the state police. The state police work out of our building with our investigation. So I, I, you know, I, so all this back and forth, no one's gonna be able to, to take it away from, whether it be us or anyone else, until the investigation is, is completed. I, I don't, uh, I, I'm, I'm just at a loss with, um, keep asking about the independent, there, there's no, there's nothing laid down that would suggest or, or a need for independent when the police department is investigating it, I, so, that's where we at.
All right, thank you, Chief Riley, I appreciate it. We just, we're just trying to follow up and make sure we're doing what's asked of us, okay?
Well, I, I, I promise you, it is, it is being investigated, we're trying to run down every lead, we're trying to make sure that, you know, we, 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 we cover what we can, talk to who, who will talk to us. Uh, we, we didn't really want to say too much about it because it makes people not wanna talk to the police when they know that we're coming, you know, so. But it is being looked at, and believe me, if there's something that we need done, uh, that we can't do, we have no issue at all reaching out to the state police or anyone else that we may need help for. We, we, we've never been afraid of that.
Thank you.
All right, good, moving right along, Denise Champagne, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel.
Good evening.
I want to express thanks to Commissioner Glenn Anderson from the Wayne County Commission. Because of him on Thursday, last Thursday, the twenty-fifth, in the City of Inkster in partnership with the Wayne County Department of Public Health, held a vaccination clinic for residents of Inkster who were sixty-five years of age and older. Under the leadership of Fire Chief Hubbard, we were able to vaccinate four hundred and ten individuals. Many thanks to the city hall staff, we feel, uh, fielded more than a thousand calls during the week. All calls received by the close of registration were returned and then appointments were made by Wayne County. We'd like to thank the Inkster Fire Department, the Inkster Police Department, and DPS, as well as all the volunteers who worked the event. Thank you also to the Legacy Group and Western Wayne Family Health Center for lending their support as well. We received many compliments from the seniors, who are grateful for the clinic and very pleased with how organized the event was. Commissioner on Aging will continue to take a waiting list of those still needing their shots. Please call three one three five six one two three eight two and leave your name and phone number to be put on this list. Thank you.
And, and Denise, I know you can't thank yourself, but we wanna thank you too for being a part of that leadership role. We got a lot of emails and, and just thanking, um, you and the Commissioner on Aging for, for your role on that, so we really appreciate you and your leadership with that as well. Thank you. All right, um, Officer Lebo? You're unmute, let's, um-
There we go. How's it going, everybody? Just wanted to- How is everybody? Oh, just wanna take a second to say that, as many of you know, um, I have been the Community Relations Officer in the city for the last several years. While I've recently been promoted to detective, and I am proud to introduce you guys to our new Community Relations Officer. That's Officer Megan Summers. Officer Summers has been with the department for many years and has been, uh, a lot of good accomplishments under her belt, and I really look forward to you guys getting to know her a little bit. And here's Officer Summers.
Hi, everyone, um, I will post or I'll give out my phone number if you guys wanna, um, if you wanna grab a pen and paper. It's three one three four zero nine six six nine eight, three one three four oh nine six six nine eight, that's my worksell. Um, so if you guys need me for absolutely anything, feel free to reach out, and I look forward to working with the community for everything.
Yeah, three one three?
Yep, three one three four zero nine six six nine eight.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, lastly, I just wanna say that just because I'm the detective bureau now doesn't mean that anything has changed, really. My phone number is still the same, everybody can still reach out to me if they ever need anything. I just hope and look forward to serving the citizens of Inkster in another capacity. So, Officer Lebo is always here, just a little bit different title, so I look forward to seeing you all again soon, hopefully in person one of these days. Uh, you all have a good night.
You too.
Thank you, Officer, for the continued work, and thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
You know, you, you've been around for a while, so we're, we're glad to see you in that position now.
Yeah, I'm excited, I look forward to it.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bivins?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel, audience, viewing audience, um, listening audience. I just would like to take this opportunity to thank everyone who participated this past, um, February the twentieth and twenty-first, and assisting us in passing out the water, water filters to the residents of the City of Inkster. I'd like to thank my staff, I'd like to thank the elected officials that came out. Like to thank the mayor's staff and the staff of City Hall and all those who participated and not volunteered. And to add to that, we will begin passing out filters in our building starting Wednesday, March the third, on the hours of eight AM to three thirty PM, Monday through Friday. We ask one person come up to the door, if you were waiting in your car, and please have a mask on. We would not let you in the building, we would conduct everything from our front door. Yeah, we're getting this set up tomorrow, make sure everything goes smoothly. If there are any further questions or concerns about water filters or lead tested, feel free to call my office at three one three five six three nine seven seven four. Thank you once again for all the help that we had out there, it was very successful, I think we did close to fourteen hundred filters in the two days. Thank you, guys.
All right, and, uh, Mr. Bivins, if you can, if you can speak to or receive the email today as it relates to some information that is posted um, out in the community or on the website, on the state's website, can you just speak to that for Council?
Uh, yes, we received a, uh, email today from Mister Blackwell, um, with some information stated that me and the mayor put out false information about the lead and copper. So, for those of you who are in council in twenty nineteen, let me correct that so you clearly understand. At twenty nineteen, we were ordered as a community in the municipal by the state to do lead and copper sample at thirty of our residents' homes. Out of thirty of those homes, four of them failed, which put us over the fifteen parts per million percentile, which caused an action level to be taken by the state. One of those action levels was that I had to go out and test the following year, which would have been twenty twenty, at sixty residential homes for lead and copper. So I did that this past year, and in December, we were notified by the state again that we failed because we had eight homes that were over the fifteen percent lead per billion requirement. So that put us in the ninety percent percentile again. So what I did in twenty nineteen, I'm doing all over again, which I am passing out the water filters as we did on February the twentieth and twenty-first. We are beginning to test another sixty, which means thirty in the first six months, and then thirty the next six months. And if we fail again, we'll do this procedure all over again. So Mister Blackwell reached out to the state and got some information, but he didn't get all the information. So I would appreciate it in the future, if you're gonna accuse me and the mayor of something, please have all the facts, the information in order. I would appreciate it. And to this body, I apologize for his misunderstanding, but I just don't want the citizens to think me and the mayor, because this is a serious issue with this lead and copper, and we're being proactive in getting it done and taking care of the city business. That's all I have to say on that comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
One clarification, uh, Mr. Bivins, you indicated in twenty twenty, the lead sample area, you tested sixty and only eight failed?
Yes.
Okay, and then in, in, in twenty nineteen, you tested thirty homes and only four failed?
And four failed, but, and those failed, it's put us over the ninety percent percentile with the state. We have to be below ninety percent. Once we exceed that threshold, there's an action level that comes from the state, and then we have to do, meet those criteria or that action level, like we're doing now.
All right.
I, I'll wait to, to get down to counsel, I, I have another question, yes, I don't wanna wait, Mr. Bivins, I got a question I have to ask.
I'll be here to the, I'll be here to the end, sir.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Um, Mayor, before Mister Bivins leaves, just a point of clarification. The filters, starting the third, will be given out every day, Monday through Friday, right?
From eight AM to three thirty PM at the Department of Public Service, twenty-six nine hundred Princeton.
Okay.
Good, all right. Uh, Councilman Chisholm, you see any other hands? I don't see any. All right, moving right along, city clerk?
No comments tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right, city treasurer?
Yep, just a few things. Um, so, affected today, uh, taxes are payable to the county, this is March first. Um, after that, the, uh, the city's audit, we've extended the date to April first, but we plan on filing in the next seven to ten days. Uh, the June thirtieth, twenty twenty forecast is ongoing. We are looking to meet with city council the week of March twenty-second, we're still hammering out the exact date. Um, in regards to the open, uh, FDCVT grant filings, the, the reimbursements and, um, other filings we had for that, uh, Plant Moran and Tracy have made great progress on this, uh, some submissions have occurred already. More will occur this week, and, uh, we anticipate all of them by next week with the question of maybe one outstanding because it requires more detail. Um, but I, I think that they've done a phenomenal job getting everything together, uh, going back two, three years, gathering the detail for it and pushing it forward, uh, further. Uh, I've been in constant contact with the Michigan Department of Treasury, two of our contacts there have said they will assist us as needed to ensure that we can, uh, work on getting these FDCVT grants across the finish line, so I am optimistic on that. Um, we do continue to find issues with invoices that were neither recorded nor paid, uh, relating to prior years. Um, I mentioned this just as these can adversely impact our current year financials, and it is nearly impossible for us to predict when these will arise. Um, this is more of a forward-looking mention right here, but at the next city council meeting, uh, we'll be presenting a proposal, uh, for the Cherry Hill Apartments development, where we eliminate one pilot agreement and implement a new pilot agreement on another tax parcel. And the reason I mention this is providing this tax arrangement, uh, would result not only in renovation, but also would, uh, increase our tax revenue by about eighty thousand dollars annually to the city. Uh, we'll provide more details, uh, in the next council meeting, but I just wanted to say that this on, this is on the horizon, it's good news. Um, on the HR front, Sue has been here about two weeks now, she's been working through delinquent items through our first couple of weeks. Uh, she's audited and brought us up to current on the fifty-eighty and fifty-one-eighty state withholding taxes. She's brought us up to current on the state assessments going back to twenty nineteen. She's helped Rhonda with the quarterly tax reporting, uh, sorry, quarterly payroll tax reporting. She's worked on job descriptions, unemployment claims, and she's began her initial review of our ACA reporting. Um, then, as always, I wanna thank my team in the treasurer's office, Darius and IT, Sue and Rhonda for HR and payroll. And I also wanna say, uh, thank you to Denise Champagne and Fire Chief Hubbard, that was an amazing vaccination event. I heard a lot of people say a lot of positive things about it. And then, uh, lastly, if I'm not mistaken, is Councilman Chisholm's birthday, so I wanted to say happy birthday to him. Thank you, Mister Treasurer.
Say happy birthday, everybody, all of you.
You know, you don't have to oblige, I appreciate it.
All right, Councilman, it's your birthday, you up first, go ahead, Councilman Chisholm, this is your birthday, you can go first.
Oh, I have none, thank you all for the birthday wishes, um, I appreciate it. That's, that's really all I have, it's just another day we here continuing to serve. Thank you.
Happy birthday, young man.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Shaw?
Yeah, I too wanna say happy birthday to my colleague, and also Mister, Mister Chair, I have, uh, I wanna say thanks to the administration for- And also, Mr. Mr. Chair, I have, I want to say thanks to the administration for the mayor and his office for helping. Um, I had some seniors for the vaccination. Heard that it was a, a definitely a marvelous event. And I know, Mr. Chair, that we're going to continue on trying to get everyone in the city vaccinated.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. And also I wanted to say thank you to, uh, Chief Riley and the Road Patrol for the police presence in the southeast, uh, northeast section of the city. I appreciate all that he is doing with the Road Patrol and the Inksley Police Department. And I want to say to all of my block captains, this is that time of year that we're coming out of our homes in the spring and summer. So I just want to encourage my block captains to make sure that you get out your cell phones and your notebooks and your pens, to start jotting down some of these, uh, suspicious activities, uh, some of these license plate numbers of these, uh, speeders that's going down, up and down the street. I know I have some on Glenwood that just was peeling out, uh, just about an hour ago. I know some of my members that's on the line here, um, had heard them in the neighborhood. So I want you to make sure you be vigilant. Uh, we used to have a saying in the block club, if you see something, say something. And to remember that you can call, uh, Police Department anonymously, anonymously. And I want to also encourage, um, our residents to bag Inkster blue, men and women in blue, bag Inkster blue as they, as they support our community too. And also, uh, Mr. Chair, if, uh, we can have some patrol on Glenwood between Inkster and Harrison Street. And that's, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Between Inkster and Harrison, okay. Got you, Councilwoman Wiley?
Uh, yes, just one thing, um, reference the water bills. I'm still receiving complaints from residents regarding their water bills and as if I, I recall, this is how it started back when we had all those other issues. And I don't want to see us become lackadaisical where it's concerned because it appears that the billing is not consistent. It's just kind of willy-nilly. So if I could talk to someone, I'm, you know, gone over and read the policies that are on the, um, the website, but it's not necessarily in line with what these people are telling me is going on as far as bills are concerned. Because, um, when you're, when you're, um, your bills become more, you've had consistent use with actual billing and then you get an estimated one that's like three times higher than all your actual billings. Well, that's going to cause concern for people. So I would like to figure out some sort of concrete way we can address those situations because the last time I was told that we need to call and have the meters chat. I want to know if it's possible because I understand that you can send a picture of your meter and maybe that'll put you back in line with what they're reading at their location. So just something to appease these people who feel they're being unjustly charged. That's all.
Yeah, very good point. Go ahead, uh, Treasurer. I know you want to speak to that.
Yep, uh, Councilwoman. So just, uh, with that, I mean, uh, when these occur, we're hoping that, you know, these are just one-off situations. Um, I do know that, you know, given your position, people will reach out to you regarding it. Uh, I do encourage all, uh, all residents that have these questions about their water bills to call us. We will try to take care of them. We will, uh, try to figure out what's going on. Um, sometimes it will require someone coming to the house. Uh, I think we know that, you know, at times, some of these meters, they, uh, you know, they have certain upkeep that's required and whatnot. Um, but if, I, I certainly encourage anyone who has questions about their water bill to please, please, please contact our office. Um, and we will do what we can to help and try to get things fixed. Um, I don't have a blanket way to say how it will be fixed because it may require different paths to figuring out what's wrong with each bill that you reference.
And that number is three one three five six three seven seven zero four.
Yep, thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry, go ahead. No, finish up.
Uh, three one three five six three seven seven zero four.
And also keep in mind that when these people call, as in Reverend Williams' case with that, they're not always received cordially too. So that's an issue. And a lot of people are not necessarily willing to put themselves out there when they're dealing with the city. So you have that. Like he says, everybody needs to be treated with respect. And you shouldn't minimize anybody's complaint when they call in about it.
Certainly understood. I appreciate that.
Okay, Councilwoman, you're done?
Yes.
All right. So you're Councilwoman Washington?
Um, okay, so I just wanted to give a big thank you, um, to the mayor's office as well as Wayne County Health Department and, um, DPS, um, for the water filter distribution. I was able to help in that. Heard a lot of good things about that, um, water filter distribution as well as the vaccines. Just a big thank you as well to Wayne County, um, for administering those vaccines. I've heard a lot of seniors, they're pretty, um, they've been pretty happy about that. And also happy birthday to my colleague, uh, Councilman Steve Chisholm.
All right. Moving right along, Councilman Williams.
Okay, first I'd like to start off, happy birthday, little Stevie. I didn't get off the line yet. Where you at? He in? He on?
Right here. His birthday, he can do whatever he wants.
Right here.
Whatever he is, he's still here.
I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Okay, uh, since we're getting ready to get out one minute with the mayor, on the mayor, state of the city, there's just some things I just want to clear. I got Brother Bivins on the line. Brother Bivins, we sent out a, a big, um, money that's supposed to be spent for the, uh, pumps over there in, uh, my area. Okay, I need you to tell me where you at at that point and when it would be done.
Um, it will be, uh, uh, can you hear me? Yes, it will be done. It will be done before the end of May. Uh, the pumps are coming in. Um, we had some, um, change orders sent to us by the state. So we're addressing those now and you should see some activity over there towards the end of this month, the beginning of April with the rehab of that pump station.
Okay, uh, about the signs that we're talking about down Callow in, in the area. The signs that we're supposedly putting up, uh, twenty-five miles?
We, we, I, I don't, I need to talk to you offline about that because I know we put some signs up, so I think me and you need to have a conversation about that.
Okay, um, first of all, I'd like to send a shout out also since we're talking about birthdays. I'd like to send a happy birthday to the oldest man that I know in Inkster, uh, living man in Inkster now, Mr. Luke Lampkin, okay? They celebrated his birthday, so I wanted to send out a shout out to him on congratulations. Um, Speed bumps, Mr. Mayor, is that a dead deal or what?
No, sir. I, I, I reached out to-
Looking at the man, he's gone looking at you.
I'm on, I'm on him all the time about it, so go ahead, go ahead.
So, uh, as I communicated to the mayor last week, we did finally get in touch with the state. I sent them the plans and the location we planned on putting them. I'm just waiting on their response to come back. So I gave them the streets that the mayor gave me. I think it was Glenwood, several streets he gave me that I forwarded to the state. So we just waited on them to finalize that.
Amen.
Yeah, but let me say this, that just for point of clarification, Jerome, those streets came from the police department.
Police department, I'm sorry.
Links for speeding in those areas.
Right.
So we know that the, it's a cost associated with it that we couldn't necessarily afford to pay from the general fund. Um, but we, we found a way to pay for it through the roads fund, but it has to be permanent.
Right.
So, so when we, the, the ones that we can't pay for, um, as a city, uh, block clubs along with different organizations in the community has asked for, um, you know, what the cost would be and if they could pay for them themselves. So we'll be working in conjunction with, with folks, other organizations within the community to get that done.
Yeah, sir.
I got one more little thing when you get to the point, Brother Bivins, I would-
Go ahead, I think he missed the hook.
Oh, I have one more thing to say too. Excuse me for cutting you off, Councilman Williams and Mr. Mayor. About the water filters, I need to make this clear. If you receive the filter on the twentieth and twenty-first, please don't show up in my office because we have a list and a record of everybody that received a filter. All these people should be coming to our office, the people that did not receive a filter on that Saturday or Sunday. We would appreciate it. Thank you.
All right.
All right, I'm gonna wrap this up right quick, uh, Mr. Mayor. Basically, and I hope, I, I hope it come out of my mouth the way it should come out. Um, now, for one, when people do wrong in the city, I think we're supposed to prosecute and, and, and look into investments and various things like that when people do wrong. Okay, but you know what? Ironically, I, I watched even members of the council before. We had one guy in the, in the Park and Recreation Department, name, his name was Craig. I'm gonna call his name. Stole, stole a whole lot more money than this Mister, what's it, Legend, Legend? Is that his name? Legend? And nobody prosecuted him whatsoever. They just, they, they, they laid him off. They, they laid him off from the job, dismissed him from the job, and nobody prosecuted him. And there were facts, facts, and everyone know that they were facts. You could prosecute him, but then all of a sudden now, because, uh, you, you come in this one and say, well, we're going to execute him. You won't even give the police chief time to investigate the total, total program, but nobody investigated Craig Lewis when he was in there. Nobody. And they know he stole. That's all I got to say.
All right, Mayor Proton Hour?
I don't have anything. But happy birthday, Steve, to my colleague. Happy birthday.
All right, I, I, I'll echo that. Happy birthday, Big Steve.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and just, um, just a few things that was, that was echoed, um, I'll echo as it relates to, um, just the staff, outstanding job. I just want to say outstanding job, um, for COVID vaccinations. The county was impressed. Matter of fact, they're using a couple of, of things that we did logistically inside, um, of, of the actual recreation center where we had the legacy group there with us checking people's, uh, blood pressure and things of that nature and then, you know, observing those folks leaving out. It's one of the things that they're going to implement, taking it from Inkster. I know we've been getting a lot of calls from people asking us, when are we going to have more vaccinations? Where they are forthcoming, we're just waiting for the county again to let us know when those dates will be. I've been asked a question if they can go to other communities. At this point, you cannot, but we are working with other communities just to help and see what we can do in order to hopefully come together in a big, a, a bigger venue to be able to serve all of our citizens together. So, um, we will be sending out another notification here soon as it relates to COVID vaccinations. Hats off again to Jerome, his staff and everything that they're doing with the water filters. It's excellent job, excellent job. And just for all, just for you that, that need the information, we will have some information posted as it relates to, um, again, for, um, I want to say, I will always want to call him officer. Uh, just keep calling him officer, but, uh, Deputy Chief Henry Crump Junior, he was actually a good friend of mine and actually is kind of, it's kind of tough, but, um, as it relates to him, uh, he'll be laid out at Opi Funeral Home on this coming Friday for visitation for all of you that want to pay your respects to him. And lastly, Reverend Williams, you got your, your request has been answered after talking to, um, the administration as it relates to the state of the city. I don't want to disappoint anybody. I know everybody's excited about the state of our city. But we need to have our financials in order first. So as, um, the treasurer said, uh, earlier on tonight, that we'll be meeting with the council on the twenty-second, that week of the twenty-second. We'll deliver the state of the city after that. So we're going to look at a hard date of April the seventh to deliver our state of the city because one of the major components of the city is finances. And without finances, it just don't work. So I would, it, it, it would be, if, if I came out with the state of the city next week and the treasurer doesn't have all the information that he needs for me, we, it just doesn't make sense. So, so we're going to move that date to April the seventh. Also too, just extend it to the council as well because I believe this is an opportunity for us to market our beautiful city. Um, a one minute, what you got going on in your district, what you like to see in your district. You say two minutes, two, 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 what you gotta understand that two minutes adds up to, you know, a whole bunch of minutes. So we want to keep the audience, this body, get two minutes if you need two minutes. And we'll work, we'll work it out from there because it's very important for us to really, you know, show off what we're doing within our community. We need to be the good news in our community. And I believe that this is an opportunity for us to put something out that will really define the direction that we're headed in, which is up. No matter what anybody else is saying, we're going in the right direction. I love the city of Inkster. I'm so proud to be able to serve as your mayor. I'm looking forward to April seventh to put it all before you and the direction that we headed in. Now, let me say right off, springtime is here. We're looking for a clean, safe and accessible Inkster. We will have some dates posted as it relates to our spring clean Inkster. We're going to actually go a step further with the help of Habitat for Humanity and the Nation of Islam. We're looking to bring together those groups and bring out about five hundred volunteers to do a Inkster city makeover. We're going to look at identifying the areas within each of our districts, or the six districts that we have within our city and look at, um, whether we're going to tear down a home or actually build up a home. Working with Habitat for Humanity, we should be able to accomplish that and the Nation of Islam is supporting us in that effort. So I'm asking that all of you, um, just put up your radar for that. But right now, you can get out on your curb and keep it clean. That's what we want to do. We want to help to keep our community clean. When it's a clean community, it's a safer community. So with that being said, I actually- I'm sorry?
I wanted to say one thing before you-
Go ahead.
Yeah, before you ended, I, I felt you were getting ready to end. Were you?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify something because I listen to people all the time talking about things proper and in order. And I just want to make a correction on what Reverend Williams said. The person he was talking about, Craig, was fired immediately. A report was made and it was turned over to the prosecutor's office. They declined to prosecute him. There was no internal decision made where this man was concerned, and you can check that out for yourself.
I appreciate that point of clarification. I think that, uh, as, as we move forward again, we're just moving right along. So let's move along and move forward in everything that we're doing.
That's fine, but just keeping, keeping stuff even, you know, keeping stuff correct.
Yeah, for sure. We thank you, we thank you for that, Councilwoman Wiley.
All right, not a problem.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn.
It's Steve's birthday. We're getting off of his, his support.
Support, support, support.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Have a good night. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.